Longtime Ward Three resident, and also for Molly Murphy, the mother of Molly Ettenborough, for the city. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
City clerk on the roll call for city council meeting, October 28, 2013.
Counselor Hartwitz.
Present.
Counselor Hirsag.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
Counselor Jones.
Present.
Counselor Sullivan.
Present.
Counselor Cameron.
Present.
Counselor Cronin.
Present.
Counselor Darrow.
Present.
Counselor Earl is absent.
Present.
Late file item.
There are three late file items, as you can see on your desk. The first one is appointment number four, this argument, there's an order number four, and there's a communication number five.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules that the late files may be accepted and inserted in their property.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Bring them up on the regular agenda. Rob Germanara.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the city council. My name is Rob Germanara, 2 Ashland Street, Newburyport. I'm standing here before you tonight in regards to a long overdue parking issue at the bottom of Ashland Street. I've been an eight-year, two-day resident of number 2 Ashland Street. I have a 70-year family history on the street. My grandmother bought a house 70 years ago. I have a 47-year history of the garage in question on the corner where the parking issue arises from. This isn't a case of a guy moving into the neighborhood and then, you know, starting trouble or wanting to make trouble for a small business. Nobody in the city can appreciate being a small business guy and the tough times that are associated with it than me and the city. And this is an issue of public safety. We've had incidents where we can't get out of our driveways safely because cars are lined up both sides of the bottom half of Ashland Street, specifically from Ashland Court to Merrimack Street. We have issues where the hoods are up on vehicles and the garage is working on the vehicles in the street. There's been oil left in the streets at times and speedy dry. We've had ramp trucks dropping cars off in front of our driveways. We have a really good neighborhood. We have a 94-year neighbor that wouldn't make a complaint even if she felt this way. There's a letter in the package that also spoke of the recent auto body that's been going on down there. And greatest neighbor in the world at 5:00 o'clock at night, but during the day, from 8:00 to 5:00, it's game on, doors are slamming, conducting business in the street. The issue is long overdue to be addressed. I would feel bad for them if they didn't have any off-street parking. The fact remains, it's a residential area. It's a 410 auto repair use according to the zoning regulations, which requires three parking spots per bay. There's four bays, one per employee. They currently have 30 off-street parking spots. I would ask that the city council would unanimously give me a vote in order to get resident-only two-hour parking and to have it posted with signs from the bottom of Ashland Street at Merrimack Street to Ashland Court on both sides of the street. It's a tough street to pull out of. If anyone in this room's ever pulled out, you've got a 50/50 chance of getting out, going right to downtown, maybe a 1-in-4 shot going left without some accident occurring. So it's an issue that's long overdue that needs to be addressed. Again, it isn't a matter of being a bad neighbor. I think they're a good neighbor. I just think that it's a public safety issue that's long overdue. And I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Jackman.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ken Jackman. I live at 114 High Street. Most of you will probably affectionately know of it as the Pink House, which now has a beautiful stone wall in front of it. The issue that I'm here tonight to talk to you about is what's in your packet. The stone wall has been hit five times last winter. And what I'm here to ask you about is we began back in April to come up with a solution to try to keep the cars off the sidewalk and not careening into the wall. And if you look at the statistics on this, it's not an issue that we're thinking may happen someday. Last year, we had nine days where it snowed more than two inches in Newburyport, and we had five accidents at that site that required police, fire, ambulance, and tow trucks to remove the cars. It's a 60% chance that if it snows more than two inches in Newburyport, we're going to have a car careening off the road at that location across the sidewalk and into the wall. Now, the bigger issue with the wall isn't so much our concern for what we've just put in, it's the fact that the location that all five cars hit is inches away from the button that people press and wait at to cross State Street. Now, I witnessed three of those crashes myself, and it's scary. The cars are not coming at excessive rate of speed. There's nothing to stop them. The curb has settled, and they go right across and into it. So on behalf of not just my wife and I, who live at the property, but on behalf of the person that could be stuck at that corner the next time that this happens, I ask you to consider the solution we put forth. I'm willing to partner with the city and share in the cost of doing this. The solution I'm proposing is the installation of four bollards. It involves putting in four pipes. They cost about $40. It's a Schedule 40 steel pipe. It's set to a depth of four feet. If the city would do that, I'm willing to split the cost 50/50 on buying the matching bollards that would match Bartlett Mall and all of the light posts throughout Market Square, and I'll share 50% of the cost on that. So with that, I ask for your consideration.
Thank you. Jan from 184 State Street. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jan Neeler. I don't, I've never even been to one of these meetings, so if I do something wrong, tell me. I live at 184 State Street, and about six, eight months ago, Visiting Angels moved in next door and brought 60 people to the neighborhood that was already careening out of control with the court parking, which I'm sure you all know about. So I would just like some parking for the people that live on the street and to have the guy who owns Visiting Angels to quit parking his advertising car in front of my house all weekend. Anything else that I should say?
Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andy Port.
Thank you. My name is Andy Port, planning director for the city. I'm here to answer any questions you might have regarding two items that would expect to come out of the Planning and Development Committee meeting this night. That's the preservation restriction for 36 North Atkinson Street. That's number four. And number five, in the Planning and Development Subcommittee, is the adoption of the Affordable Housing Production Plan. I'm here to answer any questions you might have regarding those items. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for public comment. Move on to consent agenda.
This evening consists of the approval of minutes for the Republican Party. There are two transfers in the packet. First one is DPS Highway, reverse recreation, 150,000 to Highway Fuel and Oil, same amount, that's in for approval. Second is the Parks Commission on Capitol Park Project Stabilization, $10,000 to Parks Maintenance, same amount, for approval. There are three communications, first communication is the Hivery Elementary, keep go. Ninth, annual spring 5K road race for May 4th, 2014, has to be referred to public safety. The second is the block party of October 26th, Jackson, at Jackson Street, at Oakland-Willens Streets, has to be received and filed, consent dates are defined by. And the third communication is removed at the request of Counselor Cronin. That's the letter regarding High Street and State Street safety issue. We'll take that up on the regular agenda. There are three appointments, first reading, Anie, Rainey, Elwok, 43 Purchase Street.
You mentioned your problems, but also that's very good.
Thank you, Mr. President. October 30th, 2014. The reappointments are David Deluski, 334 R. Merrimack Street, to the pre-commission November 1st, 2015, and Sheila Tange, Tandex Street, to the pre-commission November 1st, 2015. And that is the consent agenda as a consistency.
Who wants to take anything else up? Who's with the council?
Motion to approve is amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Move on to the regular agenda. Three occasions.
That's a letter from Ken Jackman, two pages, to Counselor Hirsag, that we've heard about was likely to read the first part.
First part, okay.
Wanted to bring an issue to your attention and ask that you please present it to the city council. As you know, our home at 114 High Street is at one of the business intersections in town for both vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Two years ago, we completed the granite wall. It was a significant improvement to the overall of the corner during periods of ice and snow. The granite wall was hit a total of five times. Because of the granite curbing on that stretch of road, when it settled, it's leveled with the road grip, curbing no longer provides any intended protective barrier qualities to stop cars. On three of the occasions, there are police reports filed, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to request the city install three to four bollards at the corner to give a visible definition to the perimeter of the corner and provide a means of stopping vehicles that have lost control. And I think that's the gist of this.
Counselor Hartwitz, motion received and fast. Second. Discussion, counsel.
Thank you. Since this really isn't in the purview of the city council, if we receive and file this, I am probably representative to the Traffic Safety Committee, which is really the appropriate place to discuss this. That committee is now kind of getting up to speed on several traffic issues around town. So with your lesson, I would move it over to them.
Counselor Hirsag.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Cronin and I have had discussions about this in the past. I'm still a little confused how something gets to be in the Traffic Safety Committee. My understanding is that the council had created it as an advisory board, if you will, similar to our having an energy advisory committee. But things do not come to the city council and be referred to the EAC. Rather, the EAC just hears them. So I guess my question is, for future reference, should citizens approach any councilors about issues that are more apropos to the Traffic Safety Committee? Should it still come to the committee as it came tonight? Or should folks just contact Counselor Cronin or other members directly? I'd like to understand that.
Any suggestions?
My only suggestion is to, you know, to steady on, as somebody would say, that if we get a complaint, we can maybe facilitate funneling it to where it belongs. And at that point, we can certainly take action there and bring something to the council if need be for.
And if it doesn't, you know, probably better to come before the council, because we don't know about it. Pretty hard to act on it. Fair enough. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Communication four.
That is a letter from Rabbi to Mayor Holliday and city councils on behalf of the Newburyport Jewish community. I am respectfully requesting once again a place of menorah at Market Square during the upcoming Chanukah holiday. Holiday falls quite early in the Gregorian calendar. First night is Wednesday, November 27th, runs until Thursday, December 5th. I will bring the menorah to Market Square on Tuesday, November 28th, and bring it back to the synagogue on Friday, December 6th.
Motion to approve. Second. Discussion. Counselor Hirsag.
Thank you, Mr. President. The rabbi has hoped to be at this meeting today. He actually, earlier today, he emailed me a letter that he requested I read before the council if it's okay. I date October 28th. Dear city councilors, on behalf of Newburyport's Jewish community, I am respectfully requesting once again to place menorah in Market Square during the upcoming Hanukkah holiday. The holiday falls quite early this year on the Gregorian calendar. The first night is Wednesday, November 27th, and runs till Thursday, December 5th. If approved, I would bring the menorah to Market Square on Tuesday, November 28th, and bring it back to the synagogue on Friday, December 6th. He goes on to write, "I cannot even begin to express how incredibly meaningful last year's Market Square menorah was for our proud yet small Jewish community. I should also, though, emphasize how the Market Square menorah really transcended particular religious and ethnic groupings, as tens of Newburyporters from all backgrounds and religious affiliations gathered each evening. I would also respectfully remind the councilors of the important point made in last year's discussion by now state senator, then city councillor Katie Ives. Katie pointed out that the courts through the country have again and again ruled that a variety of religious symbols goes along the way in neutralizing the concern of, quote unquote, church and state. It is when there is a lack of diversity that there is potentially an issue of church and state, if there is a perception that one religious denomination is being promoted over another. I, along with my community, would be grateful if the city council would once again support this initiative and grant permission for the placement of menorah in Market Square from the 26th through the 6th."
Any further discussion? Counselor.
As I expressed last year, when this issue came before us, I disagree with Counselor Ives' interpretation of our responsibilities, that we are stewards of public properties. I believe the Constitution is quite clear on the separation of responsibilities here, in that neither the promotion nor the prohibition of religious activity is within the purview of our government. And on that basis, I'm decidedly uncomfortable with the use of our public facilities to erect a display of religious significance, whether it's from the Jewish community, or the Christian community, or the Muslim community, or any other. It doesn't matter whom. Whether it was a menorah, whether it was a crash, whether it was a crucifix. Again, I would object to it and will vote against the use of public properties for this purpose.
Further discussion? Motion is to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Poll?
No.
First one, Andrew Egman. What's that? Late file number five.
A note from Mayor, in front of the mayor, to city council on free cash balances, tax rate implications. Goes on to two pages. It states that master of Doris, who did review of cities, applied 13 financial activities and has issued the following amounts for free cash retained earnings. General fund free cash, $2,492. Water retained earnings, $1,609. Sewer retained earnings, $1,768. And harbor retained earnings, $384,000.
Move to receive and file. Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Thank you. Second appointment, sir. Late file six.
Appointment, second reading.
Was that first one?
Appointment number.
We're watching this lately, right? Let's go.
This is the late file appointments. It reads as follows. Hereby appointing to your approval, following named individual as a member of the Bopet Mall Commission, this term looks fine, December 1st, 2016. Name Andrea Gao Egman, 83 High Street, Newburyport, Mass.
Counselor Carter, ready to move to suspend the rules and approve this in one reading. Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Motion approved. Second. Discussion. Roll call. Roll call. Motion approved, set appointment. Counselor Hartwitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Second reading. There are number them. First, U. Calvert, 12 Latwood Street, pre-commission, October 30th, 2016. Dr. Barry Spurrow, 4 Lafferty Street, Disability Commission, November 1st, 2016. Those are appointments. Reappointments. Karen B. Winif, 7 Lincoln Street, Affordable Housing Trust, September 1st, 2014. Paul J. Harrington, 251B High Street, pre-commission, November 1st, 2016. Daniel P. Washall, 47 Plummerant Conservation Commission, September 1st, 2016. Jeffrey Graves, 17 Dalton Street. Island Cemetery Commission, November 1st, 2016. Kevin Wallace, 40 Oak Street, Loop Street Local Historic District, October 30th, 2016. Susan Chase, 44 Oak Street. Emma Andrews, October 30th, 2014. Kristen Sherman, 9 60th Street. Emma Andrews, October 30th, 2014. Donna Conway, 27 Marwell Street. Emma Andrews, October 30th, 2014. Elizabeth Valeriani, 29 Oak Street. Emma Andrews, October 30th, 2014. Kathleen Chase, 2 Belcher Street. Assistant Treasurer Collector, November 1st, 2016. That is the list of reappointments.
President, I have a rule for approval of the cumulative list.
Second. Discussion. Roll call. Counselor Hartwitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien.
Present.
Orders.
Order number one is as follows. That the Newburyport City Council appropriate $1,252,000 from the premium paid to the city upon the sale of bonds issued to the Brezner Hand School construction project, which are the subject of a prop two-and-a-half debt exclusion, to pay cost of the project being financed by such bonds and reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for such project, but not yet issued by the city, by the same amount. And that the Newburyport City Council appropriate $1,059,000 from the premium paid to the city upon the sale of bonds issued to the Monarch Mullen School Construction and Renovation Project, which are the subject of a prop two-and-a-half debt exclusion, to pay cost of the project being financed by such bonds and reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for such project, but not yet issued by the city, by the same amount. Submitted Counselor Edward C. Cameron.
Motion to approve. Second. Discussion. Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, to show on the record that I did arrive slightly late, but I am physically here. I was hoping, but no, I am happy to be here. The auditor, Auditor Squilla, sent me a couple of memos about this, and this is really just to get the ball rolling with the financing. So, and we could send it to committee, but that'll push it back a couple of weeks. So this is to get those two projects going. It's pretty standard, although I'm not an expert on bond financing, but I don't know if the mayor's director of policy and administration has anything more to add, but I think that's the gist of it.
He said, "Thanks for putting him on the spot."
I could tell.
Glad, with Counselor Cameron. So essentially, this was the way that the bond issuance for the two school projects was financed. The city receives an upfront premium, and this is applying that premium toward the issuance of those bonds. It's just an accounting practice that's recommended by First Southwest.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
If it's a bond, do we need a roll call?
I would do a roll call.
Roll call, please. Counselor Hartwitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Order number two.
That the city council, the city of Newburyport, approves the following license contractor application for 2013 construction year. Phoenix Communications, 25 Otis Drive, Shrewsbury, Mass.
Motion to approve. Second, the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Move to order number three.
Same city council, city of Newburyport, who has the following license contract to MJ Cataldo Landscaping and Construction, 25 Otis Drive, Littleton, Mass.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Late file number four.
City council, the city of Newburyport, approve the following license contractor act of 2013, Northern Essex Limited, operated by John Y. Hannah, Essex, Mass.
Move to approve. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Late file number four.
City council, the city of Newburyport, approve the following license contractor act of 2013, Northern Essex Limited, operated by John Y. Hannah, Essex, Mass.
Move to approve. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Move to audit number three.
Same city council, city of Newburyport, who has the following license contract to MJ Cataldo Landscaping and Construction, 25 Otis Drive, Littleton, Mass.
Motion to approve. Second, the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Move to audit number three. Good looking, man.
Same city council, city of Newburyport, who has the following license contract to MJ Cataldo Landscaping and Construction, 25 Otis Drive, Littleton, Mass.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Late file number four.
City council, the city of Newburyport, approve the following license contractor act of 2013, Northern Essex Limited, operated by John Y. Hannah, Essex, Mass.
Move to approve. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Move on to ordinances. Audit form.
Audit form one is.
You don't have to read the whole thing.
It is chapter four of boats, docks, and waterways, Article Four, say, new article four, shellfish, shellfishing in designated areas, there's a purpose and authority, liability definitions, fees, and it goes on for three pages. Submitted Counselor person.
Move to waive the rules and approve in one reading.
Second.
Doesn't just have to print it for us? City clerk, no?
The rule in the charter, I believe, I think it's section 21, says if it is first introduced and is not going to committee, and the wish of the council is that it have one reading rather than two, and not go to committee, it should be, quote, "an emergency", which they define as a matter of public health or safety.
But the clams rely on it.
Counselor Cronin.
Just reading the Globe this weekend, if the clam flats are open, which I believe they are, we could kind of suggest this is an emergency, because you're going to have digging down there. They like to get fees, but more importantly, make sure that the clams get to the treatment plant for cleaning. But.
Counselor Hirsag.
I guess I'll add just one other piece before I yield to Mr. Lombardi, if he could share more details. But essentially, the language in this ordinance, in this proposed ordinance, is what the city council has already approved in the form of an order. My understanding is there is nothing new in this ordinance that's not in the order. So in essence, we've already approved this. It's just the procedure which we haven't approved, because we haven't approved this law.
Counselor Jones, so? Mr. Lombardi, then?
I'm going to take the pass.
Okay.
Just to follow up on what Counselor Hirsag mentioned. So a couple of meetings ago, the city council approved the shellfish management plan with the state that allowed us to reopen job flats. We've, excuse me, you have appointed a shellfish constable, and really, all this is, is allowing him the enforcement mechanism on licensing, on fines and fees, and all of that. The concern is, is that where it's a moderately contaminated area, if there's unlicensed The concern is, is that where it's a moderately contaminated area, if there's unlicensed shellfishing occurring on the flats, right now, as it stands, the shellfish constable doesn't have recourse in terms of local ordinance.
I mean, just, just to say, I mean, I know this kind of seemed like it came up pretty quickly, but we're, I don't know, we should have, should have done this all together and then, then had it start operations, and I'm sure there was a reason, maybe it was something to do with the state. I know we did get held over in a meeting or two, but, you know, I don't, I mean, I don't see anything that I have questions about in here, but just to go through, I mean, it's really not an emergency, emergency.
Counsel Jones?
And therein lies the rub, and important to remember that we're talking about crafting an ordinance, and if the ordinance doesn't follow the prescribed procedure with regard to publishing, then it's, then it's subject to debate in a court of law. For example, the authority granted by this is, is fines and confiscations, and I would assume that if fines and confiscations come into play, that a wise attorney would look at it and say, "Well, it's, it's unenforceable, and therefore, the city's at fault because it wasn't properly put through." So while, while we would like to get this done quickly, we are suffering in our own hand for our inefficiency, and therefore, I am really reluctant to suspend the rules to do this. I'll vote in favor of sending, sending it to committee, and I'll vote in favor of it coming out. I just think that we are risking, we are, we are risking the credibility of the ordinance in defense by not following the prescribed path.
Counsel Connell?
I agree with the counselor about the unenforceability of something that doesn't follow a prescribed path. I'd feel much more comfortable if we had a, a letter or a vote from the Board of Health saying that a public health emergency mandated or required prompt action, take this up in a single reading tonight. Absent that kind of documentation, I, I'm reluctant to vote this through at this time. I would certainly prefer the path be through the committee and then back out.
Anyone else before we go back to second round? Counsel Hirsag?
Mr. President, I'll, I'll move to withdraw my motion and refer this to.
License and permits.
License and permits.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, the original second has to withdraw the second before I can do so.
Second. Good job.
So you want to refer to license and permits? Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance two. Ordinance two, chapter two, administration, article three, boards, committees, commissions, division seven, sidewalk advisory board, there is hereby established sidewalk advisory board consisting of nine voting members. Purpose of the board is to make reports and recommendations to the mayor and the city council on all matters related to the maintenance of sidewalks throughout the city. Board shall annually provide recommendations to the mayor and city council for sidewalk work plan and a report to board activities.
Motion to refer to general government.
Second. We don't want it.
It's not.
We already got a sidewalk committee. We already got a sidewalk committee, we don't need another one, but, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Foolishness. Ordinance three. Ordinance three, chapter thirteen, traffic, division four, stock in the section designated, section thirteen dash one thirty.
Motion to approve, public safety.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's it for ordinance, we're moving to committee items. Join Ed.
Motion to remove item number one and number two collectively.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to receive and file.
Well, we have, we have to have a vote first.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now receiving and filed. Is there a second on that one?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. License and permits.
Mr. President, can I just say one thing?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to remind everybody, there's a full field improvement meeting tomorrow at six, upstairs in the auditorium.
Wouldn't miss it. License and permits. Neighborhood and City Services.
Not at this time.
Planning and Development.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. At this time, I would like to remove from committee both items five and seven, adoption of the March 2013 Housing Production Plan, Affordable Housing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Mr. President, I would move for approval of the Affordable Housing Plan.
Second. Could you read it, Mr. City Clerk? You have it, I have it here if you need. Right here if you need.
I have a resolution. All right, go ahead.
I think it's right there.
I have a expanded resolution coming out of committee, am I right?
As of current.
Whereas Newburyport Affordable Housing Trust and the Office of Planning and Development have worked with affordable housing consultants to develop a comprehensive housing needs assessment identifying priority housing needs for the residents of City of Newburyport. And whereas recent trends in the city suggest a growing affordability gap for those in need of affordable housing, we recommend support for homeownership and housing for at-risk and special needs. Whereas the Office of Planning and Development have developed a comprehensive plan for the creation and preservation of affordable housing in Newburyport titled City of Newburyport Housing Production Plan. And whereas said plan recommends that the city consider and undertake a variety of strategies for plan implementation, including public education, capacity building, strategies, policy changes, regulatory changes, and housing development programs. And whereas DHCD requires the adoption such a proactive plan to be eligible for certain state grants and assistance according to priority. And whereas the City Council recognizes that implementation of said plan will require further action by the council, the trust, and the Office of Planning and Development, and others, now therefore, let it be resolved that the Newburyport City Council hereby adopts the 2013 Housing Production Plan as a guidance document for the implementation by the city for future years. Jointly submitted, Counselors O'Brien, Jones, Connell, and Cameron.
Tim, there, Major.
Thank you, Mr. President. Given the nature of the hour, I shall refrain from my verbose endorsement of this, of this resolution, and simply say that we have before us a very well-thought-out plan for how we can preserve, improve, and create in instances affordable housing in the city that I think everybody realizes is a, is a strong thesis of need as Newburyport moves forward, both from the perspective of making sure that the most vulnerable people in our community be able to afford to continue to live here, as well as to ward off the threat of 40B development in the city that, that we've seen time and again, is not to our great benefit. I, I hope that, that every one of you has, has read the hundred or so pages very closely, because there will be a quiz later, but in the meantime, please, please accept from me my assurance that this is a good, well-thought-out plan that we need on a go-forward basis.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call, please. Motion to approve, head of resolution. Counsel Harquist.
Yes.
Counsel Hirsag.
Yep.
Counsel Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien.
Yes.
Next one, go ahead.
Mr. President, move to remove item number six, Preservation Restriction Agreement for 36 North Atkins Street.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second.
Said, said, said Preservation Agreement.
Yes, we need a, because the sponsor isn't here, we need someone to waive the rules to accept it.
I'll move to waive the rules that the, that it allowed to be responsored by Counsel Connell.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then I'll read it, please, thank you.
At the City Council, the City of Newburyport approves the Preservation Restriction Agreement for the Preservation Historic Resources. At 36 North Atkins Street, entitled Preservation Restriction Agreement between Janet Morrison, FKA Janet Almoreland, Richard C. Batten Jr., and Patricia A. M. Batten, and the City of Newburyport, by the Newburyport Historical Commission, as approved by the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and the Newburyport Historic. Further, the mayor and city clerk of the City of Newburyport are hereby authorized to sign this Reservation Restriction Agreement on behalf of the city, unwillingly submitted, Counselor Cameron, I'm sorry, Counsel Connell.
Pick a seat.
Counsel Connell?
As the sponsor.
Our committee, as Counsel Jones will, no doubt, want to inform you, voted unanimously in favor of this, having heard testimony in favor of its longstanding concern about this property and its preservation status, and we voted unanimously because we agreed with the premise and with the execution of this particular agreement.
Thank you. Anything else? Roll call. Counsel Harquist.
Yes.
Counsel Hirsag.
Yes.
Counsel Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Sadly, Mr. President, that is all.
Thank you. Thank you for scheduling a meeting, appreciate it. Public safety.
Yes, Mr. President, I would remove item six, which is resident parking on 184 State Street itself.
Letting the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion?
I would ask to suspend the rules and allow us to talk about this. Counsel Earl is absent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Motion to approve. Second.
Gotcha.
Counsel Cronin? I'll keep it short. Had a resident of that area speak earlier tonight. That area is certainly congested with court parking and the like, and this week put it into zone one of resident parking. I talked to Counsel Earl about this, and he urges your support.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, point of order?
Yes.
As an ordinance, does this require a local board?
It does.
It's adding G2, State Street, beginning at 184 State Street, proceeding southerly to the end of said State Street on the west of East Side. So I, roll call.
Counsel Harquist.
Yes.
Counsel Hirsag.
Yes.
Counsel Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Anything else?
Yes, motion to remove item seven, resident parking, Ashland Street.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Motion to approve. Second.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I think I'm the sponsor of this one. Should have been, at any rate. I think I, I would ill serve in an attempt to speak more eloquently than the, than the resident of Ashland Street, who urged you to, to approve this. However, I'll, I'll obviously ignore my own best advice and try and speak anyway. Eight years ago, when I first came on the council, then Ward Four, City Counselor Erford Fowler invited me to, to my first friendly little neighborhood meeting, where we met outside the former Manson's garage and talked with seven or eight neighbors and two owners of the garage about the conditions that were there, and happily, there were two police officers, which is probably what kept it from turning into less of a neighborly discussion than one would have anticipated. And over the course of these eight years, I have had frequent opportunity to deal with complaints about what goes on, on the foot of Ashland, corner of Merrimack Street, with regard to this business. Much as I would like to find a silver bullet to make everyone work together on this, I see that the only solution that I can come up with, with the good and great guidance of our, our friend, the city clerk, is to try and impose some restriction in the form of two hours for vehicles that are not resident, which will cause no more stockpiling of broken and disrepaired vehicles on a public way, and will restrict them to the use of their own private lot, where by law and by ordinance, they should be, but this gives the police department an opportunity to use enforcement of the parking ordinance in order to encourage participation and compliance. So I would appreciate your support on this, thank you.
So you want two hours?
Two hours.
Don't say that, will you?
Section 13-180, resident parking, add to G2 by adding the following streets, proportions, Ashland Street, beginning at the lower corner of Ashland Court, proceeding naughtily on Ashland Street, and Merrimack Street on both sides. Submitted Counsel Thomas B. Jones.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Counsel Harquist.
Yes.
Counsel Hirsag.
Yes.
Counsel Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, motion to remove item eight. Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve resident parking on Topper Winter Street.
Second.
Gotcha. Let's go.
I had a meeting with the neighbors on the, on the top half of Winter Street, which goes from Washington up to High. There are approximately six houses, no off-street parking. They, they're coming home after a busy day, and they have no parking available many nights for themselves. By putting this in the residential parking zone, gives them a fighting chance, does not really impede the businesses in the area that are vying for those space, spaces, but does preclude staff from parking in front of homes and taking away some of the precious spaces there for eight or four hours.
Any further discussion? Counsel Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question to the counselor, had anyone talked to Andiamo, which I think is probably the main factor there?
Yes, we, there's been numerous lines of communication open through the clerk's office, through myself, I think also through the mayor's office at one point, and through interaction with the neighbors, and it's just, it's not, it's, it's not the dinner guests, that's not a problem. The people on the, on the street understand that that's part of the business, they have no problem at all with that. It's the process of hurting the long-term parkers, which are the staff that get there at, you know, early in the afternoon and are staying late in the evening, and that's, that's what the rub is there.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Winter Street approval. Counsel Harquist.
Yes.
Counsel Hirsag.
Yes.
Counsel Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Anything else?
Last one. Number nine, parking lots, waterfront trust spaces.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second again.
Discussion? Counsel Connell?
Through the Traffic Advisory Committee, the Waterfront Trust is moving in a different direction on their short-term, 15-minute parking spaces in an effort to help some of the businesses that are in that area. You will see on the page two of the little memo provided by the Waterfront Trust that they are creating two areas of four-hour spaces in their lot. Just as a reminder, their lot does not allow sticker parking or resident parking, so this would allow people shorter-term in front of the resident, in front of the businesses down, say, near Port City Sandwiches to run in, have lunch, and leave, and also right near the end of. near the end of the woodwalk. Currently, there are a couple of fifteen-minute spaces that are eliminated, going to be eliminated. They're buried in the parking lot as it is. The rest of the lot is an all-day lot, so this is another try at accommodating some things for the businesses according to the Waterfront Trust.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Counselor Harquist.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connel.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
That's it? That is all. Public utilities.
Nothing tonight.
Rules Committee.
Nothing to report.
Good of the order.
Go Red Sox.
Score is one nothing.
One nothing, move.
No.
Us. Good. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go.